Okay, we will call this month's work session together and we'll call on Jamin to do our invocation for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Father, thank you for our time here this morning. Thank you for the opportunity to come together and discuss ways to make this wonderful county even better. Father, I pray that you will bless our leaders who has the wisdom needed to make the right decisions for the citizens of Davie County. Grant them clear minds and open hearts as they listen to the words spoken here today. Father, we pray for all the families in western North Carolina as we start the transition into the winter months. Send the supplies and people needed to restore a sense of life to their shattered world. Bless our servicemen and women scattered across the globe. Give them peace, comfort, and protect them from harm's way wherever they may be. Father, continue to bless our nation and to guide its leaders. Thank you once more for this beautiful day. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen, amen. Megan, will you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge and lead to just...
To the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
Mr. Renninger, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Finney, all in favor? Lift a hand, we're unanimous there. Uh, okay, now let's move on to reports. Ms. Robin?
Good morning. This morning we'll be reviewing, um, the financial summary through the month of October. So this compares October this fiscal year with last October. As you can see, uh, we are about two point six million dollars better than we were at this point last year. Uh, according to the tax office, our collections are about the same amount through the end of October as we were last year. Uh, the rest of the, uh, of the increases, uh, for revenues are due to the, uh, vehicle financing being in September instead of November last year. For expenditures, our main differences are just our general government contribution to the capital projects fund. Here is our slide that compares our general fund revenues. The blue bars are the current fiscal year, the yellow line is last fiscal year, and the green line is fiscal year twenty-three. As you can see, everything's pretty close. Uh, right now, we're tracking sales tax. We only have one month reported through the end of October, just based on the timing. But sales tax around the state is not growing the way it was. Uh, I think that it's been only about a one percent growth across the state. What we're seeing is about five percent comparatively. But we expect it to, you know, probably change to be more like the rest of North Carolina throughout the year. So we're keeping an eye on that, but we budgeted conservatively for that. So let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions? Well, we hope with that sales tax, uh, with this last election, maybe things will open up a little bit. Thank you.
Keep an eye on it.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Johnny? Lead pipe project.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take a minute to, um, just give a quick intro. Um, with our lead pipe, we call it lead pipe. It's actually a more sophisticated term, but it's simple for us. Um, there's been a lot of talk of this in the news in some of the other counties. Um, we had sent you guys an update that we were sending out a letter to folks. Um, I don't necessarily know the other counties did that proactive work, but I know it made the news because it spooked some people. So I thought this would be a good time for Johnny to come give us an update on where we are, just in case any of our folks have any questions. Or you may have any questions of where we are at this point. Uh, and again, this is something required by the state for us to do. So, um, this just did not start with us, but we're following the rules.
So just a little background on this. Um, this was a rule that actually federal governments, uh, put down towards the state. And what this is, is it's identifying all the service line inventory throughout the county. So every meter has, um, a service line and we had to identify that, um, working through this project. So, um, public is county-owned from the water meter or from the water main to the water meter. That's what we've always known as the public side of the system. Um, and the private is a water meter to the customer's home. That's changed a little bit now. Um, we're still trying to get some clarification on a lot of this rule. This rule started, as we go through this, you'll see. Um, again, I can't emphasize how much staff really worked to really get this done. I mean, this was from the top to the bottom. I mean, from the line guys, from the treatment plant. This position that you actually hired or approved for us a couple of years ago, which Aaron Burris, he's here with us today, is actually leading all the customer concerns up. He's actually going out, he's doing a lot of water quality stuff for us, so, um... But we could, we created, um, a lot of GIS databases for this. So, in one of our budget, we actu- in one of our previous budgets, we actually bought some, um, surveying equipment. So they're actually surveying this system as we go through it. So water meters, um, we're getting ready to create some more layers to do valves, hydrants, things like that. It's not only helps comply or be in compliance with this rule, but also helps us mapping in the future. If anyone has any questions, they can pull a map up and see. So, um, so everything we went through in these accounts was compiled from records from various aspects. Uh, tax records, uh, permitting department, uh, work orders, and of course, visual inspection. Um, so the introduction and timeline to this is the final rule was published in January of twenty twenty-one. Um, they started talking about this in November of two thousand and nineteen. They published this rule in twenty twenty-one, and there's been revisions to this rule, many revisions to this rule all the way until early twenty twenty-four. And we had a compliance period to know all of our inventory of all of our service lines by October sixteenth of twenty twenty-four. We come to you now because the next part of this was we had to notify all customers that had lead galvanized requiring replacement. We call it GRR or, uh, or an unknown service line. So if, if your house was unknown for some reason, uh, we would have to send you a letters that said, "We didn't know what it was, can you help us?" Um, again, staff really worked hard to not have any of these. So we know what it is at your house, but we still had to send out, um, a certain amount of letters to people who had galvanized. Because again, at first galvanized wasn't clas- classified in the lead and copper rule unless there were certain circumstances around that. But now they're saying it is. So, um, so we've met all the compliance for this and we distributed the letters by November fifteenth. They actually went out last Tuesday. And I'm glad to say that we've only received one phone call from the public with questions. She was really nice, she just had some questions and Aaron fielded that and went out and talked to her. And that's going to be part of Aaron is any phone calls we get or any questions we get, we're not only going to just send them or direct them to websites. Aaron's actually going to visit if they want sampled, we'll sample, um, and we'll work with them to get through it. So, um, the next part of this is, um, we've got a ten-year window to remove all gal- public galvanized service lines. And we've got to do that at a ten percent a year. Um, and the sampling of the schools and daycares, that's to begin in twenty twenty-five. And then we have to continue sampling the locations with galvanized service lines beginning in twenty twenty-seven. Um, again, staff has done a great job from the top to the bottom of just getting through this and, and making sure we're compliant with the rules and making sure we're not putting the fright in the public that they have lead in their water. So our inventory, there's twelve thousand two hundred and twenty service connections. Our system can contain zero complete lead service lines. Um, when I say that, that means the whole service line is lead. It's made out of lead from, from the beginning to the back of the meter. But we sent seventy, seventy-six ga- GRR, uh, galvanized required replacement, um, which included seventy-six customer and private side. So both sides of those lines were galvanized and then forty-five utility side service lines. So forty-five of the utility side service lines were galvanized. Um, over the years, as we have leaks on galvanized, it's not the most effective pipe. So we have replaced those and we had work orders showing that this was replaced from galvanized to plastic. Um, so, um, we'll have this inventory, this is, this spreadsheet. Um, I can't say enough about it. It's very large, but we'll have it at our office and if anybody has any questions or they want to view it, they can. At some point in the future, we hope to put a layer on GIS that if someone questions what their house is, they can click on that and find out. Um, that's going to be a few years out though, because there's a lot of work needs to go behind that. So, um, we utilize Art GIS and Ezra applications to create, you know, this layer to our mapping system. Is it public right now? No, but we do have it. Um, will we make that exact, um, layer public? That'd be a question that we'll have to answer in the future. It's going to be something, you know, we don't really want to put too much information about a water and sewer system out to public, but we want enough that if people have questions, they can answer them. So the next, next steps for compliance. So we've got to sample all the schools and daycares. Um, it requires that we do twenty percent a year and we have five years until they all have to be tested. Um, speaking with staff, we are going to do this within that first year. You know, we've got a sample, there's got to be five samples per school at points of consumption. That could drinking water fountains, kitchen faucets, classroom faucets, nurse's office. Um, if they're not available, then we'll use, you know, other typical places for consumption. But in that, every faucet in these facilities will have to be labeled something for us to be able to send to the state. This is where we sampled, this is what it was. Um, I will say that anything built after two thousand and fourteen per this rule does not have to be sampled. So the new high school is not going to be part of this rule. And I have to go back and look, Ellis may fall into that same rule, but again, I'm not as educated on the school build dates as I should be right now, so... Um, again, it'll require two samples at childcare facilities, uh, drinking water fountains, kitchen faucets, same scenario. So saying that, um, uh, Davie County's done a really good job in this and they have, uh, caused us a, a lot of moving forward, no pain. So, um, the public could be very aware of what they have in their system if they, if they're, if they need, if they have questions about that.
The, Johnny, a couple of questions. Uh, one is just maybe an opinion, uh, estimated cost?
Estimated cost for us to date is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
To date?
To date, yes.
What are you estimating?
Total cost around two hundred thousand dollars.
The whole project?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have done this in-house, so in saying that, we had to say, there was some funding out there. And I'm looking at, uh, I actually looked at it earlier this week. We're seeing some utilities spend between two fifty and five hundred and fifty just to get through the phases that we are, that were low interest loans. So none of this was grant funding, it was low interest loans provided by the state.
Well, I, it, I, I had a second and third question. My second question was, is this a federal rule specifically or is this a North Carolina interpretation of a federal rule?
So it is a federal rule that was passed down to the states to implement. Um, I can tell you that if you ask a lot of the state regulators questions, they have a hard time answering them.
I, I hear you.
We're hoping, just like you said earlier, things may change.
Well, you know, that, uh, honestly, the cost you gave us was a lot less than I thought it would be just based on the sheer numbers here. And my third question was, do you think with the change at the federal level that some common sense might come into play? But I, that's above mine and your pay grade, but if it...
Everyone hears rumors, there's nothing solid. Um, I think the question is, you know, and this will be Brian's kind of fight for us is, is, is it a federal law, just like the county, if we make an ordinance, we can make it more stringent than the state rules? You know, that's, that's our priority to do. Is that going to be followed, is that going to be continued? But I wish I could answer that.
Well, we test, we test the levels of lead.
Yes.
And, and, I mean, we do that constantly.
Yes.
So, uh...
And we have never had a sample come back for lead and copper.
Yeah.
Any, anywhere close to meet any type of non-regulated levels.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other, oh, yeah, Terry. So the two hundred thousand, one hundred and fifty of it was do the mapping?
Hmm, no, not necessarily. So we had to do a lot of site visits. We used some contractors to help do that. Um, so, uh, a lot of it was mapping, engineering services, uh, equipment. That includes the GP, uh, the, the equipment that we bought to continue to do other things. So, um, a, a lot of it was for the mapping.
When I say mapping, I'm talking about building the database.
Yes, yes.
Whatever was embedded in that. But the, from the meter to the house, the individuals, is there any money for those folks? Or, I mean, obviously, we can't make them do it. And if they have the money to do it, I mean, what are...
So I have, I have reached out to get the answer to this, um, several times. And this is actually what the state has on their website. From my understanding, right now, is that the county would be responsible to replace that service line from the water main to the foundation of the home. That's what they're calling a service line. But then again, that pushes some other questions of how do we use, and Ed can probably answer this better than me. How do we use public funds replacing private property? So there's still, again, if we ask questions, the answers are very rounded from the state at this point.
Well, eh, Terry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but the two hundred thousand dollar figure you just gave me does not include this.
I would say some of it, yes. Because, because when I budgeted for this in CIP a few years ago, I knew there was a replacement, I just didn't know how much. Do I think it's going to cover every bit of it? Depending on what happens to the rule, let's say that.
Yeah, okay.
You know, you get into a lot of problems here when you start working on customer side service line. Do we hold a warranty that? Are you going to let me on your property? So, um, again, I've reached out and, you know, there's a lot of engineering firms out here trying to all scramble to figure this out. Um, and we're seeing different levels from, from different utilities of how they're doing this. But, um, currently with us, the max of seventy-six, I don't think it'll cost as much as you think to replace them if we're doing it in-house.
Johnny, how long ago was, uh, were lead pipes used going again? Because I know, I've been in the building business for fifty years and, and I never saw a lead pipe go into, to the ground.
So I would say prior to eighty-six is when it could have been used. Um, a lot did not use it, but again, it could have been used to eighty-six.
Yeah, when I first heard about this, I thought you were talking about, uh, copper lines where they had sweated them together, maybe where...
And that's part of it, you know, there could be, so in the utility system, we, there's no sweating of that, you know? It's all mechanical joint or slip joint type pipe. But when you get into plumbing and homes, that's a lot of it, lead joint solder, right? When they put copper pipe in, they use lead joint solder. Again, I don't know how much thought was put into this when it was pushed out. I think it was pushed out and there's still a lot of questions. I mean, again, if, if you're a homeowner, if I'm contacting you or sending you this letter, um, you know, who's going to pay for this? Right? Who's, I, some may be able to afford to replace their plumbing, some may not. Again, that's why I think for Davie, we're going to go out, we're going to help sample. We're going to help them understand more of what's in their system.
Do you anticipate any final regulations that says, okay, this is, this is the bible, this is what you got to do? Because you, you talk...
They say that every time they change it. Every time they, every time they revise this rule, that, that's what they say.
Because if you're going from the meter to the house, then the next thing is a slippery slope. Well, you start having to plum houses, that would be very expensive.
And, and you'll see a lot of this in the southern end of the county. More of our issues will be there than the Kindertons and, you know...
That was going to be my question, were these seventy-six houses kind of in the same area?
They were, I would s- I would say south of Moxville is where the majority of our problems, you will say. And then once, and just like you said, Terry, once, once you get to the foundation of that house, what do you do from there?
Mm-hmm.
Um, again, once we try to get this finalized from the state and get the, and write answers, uh, you know, I, I'll say this, there's been a lot of questions answered or a lot of questions asked, but only half of those questions answered. They keep pointing you to websites, to websites, to websites, so, um, you know, the template letters for the state, like Brian mentioned, are, and they put fright in people. And it's, it's not as bad as that template makes it seem, so we didn't want to use that template. Brian helped, Wendy helped, you know, my staff helped, Ed helped. We all looked at a template and we got state approval before we sent it out. It says, "This meets the needs of what you're asking for."
What's the likelihood of there being, other than like, I don't know where the supply goes into the home, would most of this plumbing not have worn out by now at this point or...
One hundred percent, yeah. I mean, you got a likelihood of polyurethane, which is a plastic pipe of twenty years. Um, galvanized, depending on what it's connected to and where it's connected, it, it's a lot less than that. So, um, you run into a lot of issues when you start going on the pub, on the private side, as I would say, with, with plumbing. As we all know, we all, you know, have houses that we've worked on in the past. You have one leak, you have five pretty quickly after that, so, um... It's something that we have to evaluate. Is it something that we do or is it beneficial for something that we let somebody else do? Because again, I mean, if most of us think there's a warranty on all work that, that's being done, so how much would a homeowner expect us to warranty that product?
And if, if we do it, we've opened ourselves up to liability also.
Exactly. And then you may have refusals. I mean, there's a lot of people that, you know, we were doing some, some field work and going out and, you know, more than once, we were told to get off the property. So, um, how would you, how are they going to think if I come trying to dig up their front yard to their house?
But it will stop at the fa- you said, we will stop at the foundation or...
As the rule states right now, it will stop at the...
I mean, wouldn't that be, you, we're not go- I mean, we're not going to get into repairing anything within the context of the home, would we?
Terry's point.
I mean...
That's a loaded question because by going home to replace a service line and it's, and it's rotted plumbing, how far do I have to go back before I leave, before these people are, have service? That's why I don't know at this point, until they clarify this rule, until they, until we get the answers to what do we replace and who's going to fund that? How much do we do?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I want to help everybody out, but I think when you buy an older home or something, incumbent upon the buyer or something, I mean, you know, we just remodeled all of our plumbing and then we inspected all of it when we bought it. And I'm not saying we didn't get some contamination at some point, but, you know, I can understand the service line part, but the plumbing with inside a house is like Pandora's box.
And that's, I think that's what we have to evaluate inside to say, do we contract this out? To let somebody else hold the liability and warranty.
Well, I, I don't know if that's, if that, if that's ever true.
Yeah.
Somebody else holds the liability or the warranty. Uh, it's kind of like the states and the, the, the feds and the state, they love spending our money.
That's right.
You know? And us taking on all the liability and the, uh...
So we're still trying to get some answers to this. And I think, do I think it will change? It has changed several times a year to date. Do I think it'll change again at some point, something?
And bottom line is, it's only seventy-six units here in Davie County.
That's a good thing.
Correct.
That's the blessing. The issue is, how do we deal with property rights? What are we doing? Where, you know, where does the line begin, where does the line end in terms of what we're looking at? So that's kind of where we are right now.
Yeah, we'll, we'll stay one hundred percent in compliance and, you know, we don't have to start actually, um, replacing the service lines until twenty twenty-seven. I believe, is that correct, twenty twenty-seven? We got to start replacing the service lines, galvanized? Yeah, so we're going to start. We're going to go ahead and replace from the main to the meter. We'll document it as we fix them, but as we have to. We're going to go ahead and start replacing.
When?
Um, I can't say next week, but I can say over the next few months, when we, when the crew, when, when our operation crews, we know the locations of the forty-five that are just county side galvanized, so that's where we'll start. We'll replace those service lines.
And you feel whether the federal rule changes, you still need to do that?
Um, yes, yes.
I guess my point is, would you wait out the federal rule a little bit before you delve into what could be a hornet's nest anyway?
Because the cost for us to do it in-house is very minimal.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's, I think we go ahead and do it and prepare for the future regardless.
Anything else? All right, thanks, Johnny, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Easter?
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't know, I don't really think this one needs much introduction. This is a continuation of our conversations that we've had since we looked at our comprehensive plan. Uh, you know, Johnny's been to a work session already and, uh, we've taken information from that work session. We've involved the planning board on multiple occasions. And, um, so I think what he wants to do today is share a few, some proposed changes to our subdivision ordinance.
All right. Thank you, Brian, thank you, board. So as Brian said, we, we had a couple of pretty informative discussions with the planning board and come up with some proposed changes to, um, address with some of the subdivision issues or some of the changes. So what we're looking at here now, the green is highlighted, is what we've come up with from the planning board. Previously is stated, we're only addressing when we discuss these are lots that are served by a septic tank system, okay? So the other majority, if they have municipal sewer in the county, there's different requirements. So just kind of keep in mind, the majority of these are on, with a private septic tank system. So lots served by a public or private water, but not public sewer, shall have an area not less than forty thousand square feet. So prior to this, there was, if you had public water, um, you could get with thirty thousand square foot. And if you had to do a well, it was forty thousand square foot. So during discussions with the planning board, they felt there was a lot of... So during discussions with the planning board, they felt there was a lot of ambiguity with that, and discussions with environmental health folks and asking, how, how many lots are thirty thousand square foot in Davie County that are served by septic? Pretty much very minimum. So we just decided to make a forty thousand square foot lot minimum for all lots in subdivisions served by a septic tank system. The, the size of the lot will be subject to the septic tank system itself, number of bedrooms, so that is just the minimum. A hundred foot minimum lot width for all lots, okay? Or a lot width at the building line of not less than a hundred and twenty-five feet, in no case less than fifty foot wide. So in essence, what that states is our cul-de-sac lots, so if you had a cul-de-sac lot, the minimum lot width is gonna be fifty feet, as long as the depth of the building line is a hundred and twenty-five foot back, you can get that. So, uh, planned developments are exempt, that's specifically in there. So pretty much in essence, what we've, all subdivisions that are, uh, on, served by a private road, forty thousand square foot with a m, minimum of a hundred foot minimum lot width. And if you look at number three, this is something that's got proposed, um, and got approved. Lots in a major subdivision that are accessed by a public dedicated or maintained street shall be a minimum of a hundred and fifty foot wide. So that's something we proposed there. So before I move on, any questions about this specific slide?
I do, number two, why would you exempt the planned development units? I mean, are you assuming they're gonna have a private system?
Yeah, those are specifically, those are already in the subdivision ordinance and the majority of those, those planned developments. We don't have pretty much a lot of those, a lot of those are associated with that. That is something we can address and take out, but we don't have many proposals coming in. There's a specific definition in the subdivision as well as the zoning ordinance for what a planned unit development is. We don't have any of these, these are mainly just single family dwelling homes associated with subdivisions. Ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of everything we see in Davie County will be subject to this.
Question Johnny, the number three, what we voted for back a year ago or whenever was about, the road, this is actually within the subdivision, or is this something different?
If, if you have a major subdivision, which is defined by three or more lots, and those lots are accessed by a public dedicated road, they have to be a hundred and fifty foot wide. So if you have a road where some of the lots are gonna be exited off of Smith Road, let's say, and you have internal roads, every lot that is accessed on Smith Road has to be a hundred and fifty foot wide, and all the lots that are designed in the subdivision that have internal private roads, those only have to be a hundred foot wide.
Okay. But those could, can be, couldn't they become, I mean, I'm not trying to make it punitive, but couldn't those become state dedicated roads? I guess just.
Well, initially, when they proposed, it's the subject to the developer, they're all private roads. They have to meet NCDOT standards as a part of our subdivision ordinance. There's some exemptions in there, and I can get to that. Normally what we see is most developers eventually want to turn those over to the state. So initially, when they come in, we're looking at a hundred and foot wide roads.
So that just kinda makes that consistent with what we.
Correct, correct. So what we're talking about now is we're talking about the subdivision approval process, okay? So when approve a subdivision here in Davie County, we just have a, a TRC, and then it's a staff approval. So in discussion with, um, the, the planning board and some of the proposed changes, we've kind of changed the subdivision approval process. So we decided to not treat all subdivisions the same, we tried to create classes. A class one major subdivision, uh, with ten lots or less. So if you're a developer and you come to us and you propose ten lots or less, the only requirements that you have to do, these are the smaller subdivisions, you have to go through a TRC, which includes the fire marshal, includes DOT, the school board is invited, um, let's see, who else? Environmental health is involved in this as well. Uh, we do invite, uh, the majority of the major, um, utility carriers for here of the county to discuss the design and the layout. And then once everything's approved, we approve it. So that, that's the approval process, this is currently for every subdivision here in Davie County that we have. So in essence, what we looked at is this is just gonna address the more smaller subdivisions. We're gonna go, same as we go, um, you submit, we do an in-house review, and then that's that, with no added accessories or added requirements to it. So our next class would be a class two sub, subdivision, okay? And it's eleven to twenty-five lots. This also includes a TRC and staff approval. But also with this, when the developer proposes to us, we have to have common open space. So fifteen percent of the total development area, that's included all in the compass of the proposed development, open space shall be required. You have to have fifteen percent of common in a homeowner's association, uh, or accepted as Davie County as, as public open space. So when you submit to us, open space of fifteen percent of the totality of the subdivision is included in that. Also in that, we require pedestrian access, you have to have sidewalks, the developer has to include sidewalks in there, um, on at least one side of the street. Shall be constructed of concrete, brick, stove, paving material. On a case-by-case basis, sidewalk shall be a minimum of five feet wide, and vertical clearance along the sidewalks shall be eight feet. Then final site plan and design approval would be through the Davie County Planning Board. So in essence, when they come in and submit, they would, uh, uh, submit it, and the planning board would sign off on the subdivision to make sure that all of the requirements are met for this subdivision. I will say there is a caveat into it, and we'll get to it towards the end, if the developer chooses for whatever reason not to comply with some of the requirements here. So the next subdivision, the next class, is we moved up to a class three subdivision. Still, we're still doing TRC approval, the common space went from fifteen percent to eighteen percent. We're still requiring pedestrian access with sidewalks. Then also we're asking for, as a part of the sidewalks, we're asking for lighting. Ornamental lighting shall be provided along sidewalks to give a bit more of a, of a better look. There's specific lighting requirements in there, and then also with that, final site plan and design approval shall go through the planning board as well as the Board of County Commissioners. So once the developer comes in with a subdivision that's forty, twenty-six to forty lots, after the planning board reviews it, then it would have to come through this board for final approval before it can be recorded.
Johnny, I have a question there, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, if it's accepted by Davie County as public open space, does it come off the tax books?
I, I don't know how that's worked, that's a jamin question, um, I, I don't know how that is in public common area. A lot of that is for, um, we're gonna push and we define what common space is associated with that. More recreational, more looking for fields and play areas. I, I don't know if that specific area can be in that, we do have subdivisions that come through that is, let's say there's a flood plain that's non-developal in that, okay? Part of that area can be used as co, common or open space, but as regards of, if it goes to what's taxable, th, that I don't know.
Can I add something, if that's okay?
Yeah, sure.
Yep. As long as that open space is transferred into the HOA, uh, they can request it being exempt, and that's the status that it will become. But it has to be in HOA's name, it can't stay in the bill.
Eighteen percent seems to be a right smart of land taken out of the tax books.
Yes, or usually, like Johnny said, it might be the flood plains, it may be, um, some of the alleyways, it may be.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalk, you know, so it's those type of things. Um, but, you know, that, that's normal across all the counties.
And if the HOA applies for, uh, nonprofit status, then at that point in time, it's gonna be taken out anyway, if it's approved by the federal government, nonprofit status.
Like, when you say, make sure on the green space thing, you're not talking about, in that ca, calculation, that's above and beyond any green space of a forty thousand acre lot, forty thousand square foot lot. That's not counting the road area.
Correct.
Per se.
Correct.
So, okay, so you're talking about like, you know, let's just say for math purposes, if, if everything was on forty acres, then that'd be like eighteen percent of forty acres, just to follow it.
Right, correct.
That'd be like another four point whatever acres.
Right. All right, so a class five major subdivision is anywhere from forty-one to sixty lots. We're still looking at a TRC, common and open space goes up to twenty percent from that standpoint. We're looking at pedestrian access, sidewalk gliding, we're looking at ornamental street trees to plant it along both sides of all public streets. We're looking at, shall have at least two NCDOT approved entries and exits that connect or accessed by the public dedicated maintained street or road. So the subdivision, you gotta have two ways in or two ways out. And also with that, final site plan and design approval goes through the county, uh, planning board as well as the Board of County Commissioners.
Johnny, you said five, but you meant four.
I'm sorry, what did it say?
You said five, but this is class four.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's class four, class four, yes, correct. Now class five. So we're looking at the same thing, TRC staff approval, we're looking at twenty-two percent open space, steel pedestrian sidewalks, sidewalk gliding, trees, two NCDOT approves, and then we're gonna require curb and gutter along all streets and roadways in there. And then also with this, final site plan and design approval by the Davie County Planning Board and the Board of County Commissioners. Okay, so there's a couple caveats with this, a couple exemptions and a couple of changes with this, so you go through there. So if you come in and you're a developer and you're doing a major subdivision, which are three or more lots, and you have a minimum of five acre lots, you're not subject to any of these. You just go through a TRC approval as well as, um, final, uh, staff approval of the site plan. So if the developer comes in and they're doing five acre lots, cause currently in our subdivision ordinance, um, if you come through and you're doing five acre lots or larger, you don't have to do a, a NCDOT approved right away. You could still do a dirt road. So in essence, this allows the developer for the larger tracts of land, you're not subject to any of the requirements associated with that. Also with that, we define what common space is this? Um, used for recreational purposes, for visual, environmental amenities, may not be occupied by streets, darts, parking areas, or structures other than recreational structures. At least thirty percent of the gross area, um, must be suitable for designed recreational, for example, walking trails and that. So that's why if you have your common space and you have non-developal property out there and it's all in a flood plain and you can't do it, and you call every bit of that common space, we're not looking to do that. Cause that's a catch-all, you're gonna have to do it anyway. Um, so we only wanna say thirty percent of that can be used as counted for the total area. So here's, here's where we go in, with all those requirements, so a developer comes in, and let's say they're doing a class five subdivision lots, and they don't want to meet these, for whatever reason, they have an issue with the, um, the twenty-two percent open space and the ornamental trees, for example. Built into this, it gives the ability for them to submit the design or any s, subsequent changes to the plan, to the planning board as well as the, the Board of County Commissioners. So this board would allow the developer to make necessary changes to the design of the subdivision. For whatever reason, I don't wanna do, I'm doing four acre lots, I don't wanna do the common area, is that okay? Then this board would ultimately have the final decision to differ from the requirements. So the developer would come in and say, my alternative design, twenty-two percent of my, I, I just, I don't wanna have it, but I'm gonna do three acre lots. Is that okay, we're still maintaining open space and green areas, and I, I really don't wanna do sidewalks. But I am gonna put in, I'm gonna dedicate a right of way to the greenway for walking trails, or something to that effect. So any alternative, uh, design requirements that differ from the requirements, initially, they could come to this board for final approval. So we're not really subject and real concrete with this. If one of the developers go through it, based upon some of the, uh, site restrictions or, or limitations, they could come to this board and differ based upon whatever reason.
But we're not looking to use this to like circumvent the forty thousand square lot, this is more like, for like a trade-off type.
This is more, like, like what we talked about, I'm doing three acre lots, I really, I've, I maximize my area, I don't wanna do twenty-two percent common space. I'm gonna do three acre lots and I'm doing this.
They're already maximizing green space.
Maximizing green space because we're doing big lots, I wanna do away with that, is this okay? And then the, the board would final off any changes associated with this. It is ultimately, the developer, if they differ from this, they would initially have to present, or I would present, or whoever, we, we can kinda work that out and differ the changes to final subdivision plan approval. Questions?
I don't have a question. It seems to me, there should be a check and balance here.
Okay.
Uh, now, for a couple of reasons. One is, we don't want to be seen as treating one developer different than we would another.
Correct.
The second is, what if, you know, i, it seems to me what we're opening up is here an alternative for every developer to come to this board, with some minimal change to the al, to, to the initial, uh, site plan that they gave you.
Correct.
Uh, that would concern me just a little bit, okay?
Okay.
Um, um, and maybe, maybe I'm just over analyzing this, but it seems like you're, we're giving them the ability just to jump the whole process.
Right.
And come to us anyway.
Right.
Um, and I have no problem with that, that's certainly, they're right, but I, I do think there should be some level of, uh, input that you and the planning board would have with this developer that says, uh, uh.
Well, in, in every, in every instance, before it would go to this board, it has to go to the planning board. In every instance, there's not one that circumvents in all the different classes, the planning board would ultimately have discussed with that. Based upon having conversations with the majority of the developers that I do have here, I've not had any, and I've addressed a lot of these with every one of them. Uh, the only thing that potentially they might have a little bit of pushback on is some of the common open space. Sidewalks, ornamental lighting and all that stuff, I think is, is okay. We, we, based upon all the community meetings and all the plans we've had, there is a huge push to keep Davie County rule. When the developers come in, we wanna be able to provide those amenities in there through green space and common areas. I would say, the majority of the developers who are developing throughout the state of North Carolina already have these in much more stringent requirements and rules. So I think they're already accustomed to this. Um, so with some of this stuff being said, based upon conversations and what I've seen with most of the developers, I, I would say there'd be a very, very small minute group of them, um, and that's just, that's my gut feeling, it may change, but who would come to this board with drastic changes. Some of the things might be, hey, I can only get twenty, as opposed to twenty-two percent, I can only get eighteen. And some of those things, I think if it's such a drastic change, I would instruct the planning board to say, hey, let's go back to the design requirement. I'm not gonna, I, I, I think, I don't think it serves anybody purpose for somebody that comes to you and says, I'm not doing sidewalks, I'm not doing this, I'm not doing this, and just kind of a blanket thing. That's not the purpose of this. I don't want it to put into where you guys, as the board, are gonna be choosing winners and losers because, you know, we're doing, I, I don't wanna do any of these things, I just wanna get as much lots as we can. The planning board will not allow that to come forward to this board, I, I will say that.
Well, that's not what I read there.
Right, 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 yeah, I, I know, well, yeah, we're still tweaking this, so, so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we are a hundred percent, so, so in essence, what this is, and, and I'll explain to this, and probably should have said this at the beginning. These are proposals, this still has to go through a public hearing, still has to go final approval. This is a moving document, all of this is based on information from workshops of what the planning board said. We took it to here, we've kinda tweaked it a little bit, if there's any things that we need to address and add to take it back to the board, this is something, this is, this is in its infancy, I think the meat and bones are here, but if those are little areas that we need to address to kinda pull out or change, then absolutely we're here. This isn't up for a vote, this isn't up for the next planning board meeting, we've got a, a, a board meeting next week. Um, this will probably be, if we can tweak it again, it'll probably be on the agenda the first of the year, to be quite honest with you.
I mean, to Mark's point on this would be, we don't wanna have a twenty-two percent requirement and then let that person do it for eighteen, and then the person that did it for twenty-two, or two, two developers have done it for twenty-two percent like the rule states, and then we get into, well, you know, it may not sound like a lot, but I had to, you know, what, what's gonna be, what are you gonna use to balance that if we say, well, they can't do it? Are they gonna pay something, are they gonna do this, or? But I do like having this, maybe we need to look at having a category in there that encourages people to look to get one that doesn't, or alternative compliance when it comes to larger tracks. Like, you set a number, you know, two acres, three acres, whatever, cause you know, the trade-off there is so much greater when you start having bigger tracks, I would think.
Right, I, I would agree.
Maybe we need to pick a threshold, or that needs to be discussed.
Okay.
Is there a threshold, is there a? Is there a threshold? Is there a number where that seems to be sweet? Is that two acres? Is that two and a half acres? Is that three acres? You know. So we all know that, you know, go around to these five acre subdivisions and they're just kind of hidden, and actually, I think people are doing us a favor when they do that, when it comes to protecting the county as the way it looks.
Mm-hmm.
Without really doing a lot. So, maybe, look at that, maybe.
Okay.
How many workshops has the planning board had on this so far, Johnny?
We probably, we had two, probably an hour and a half each, so about...
Really, that's just kind of scratching. I mean, that's...
They are, we did not go...
Three hours is not a lot of work in this business, but...
We, we did not go into, this was the specific approval process, okay? The, the, the subdivision ordinance is full of a lot of approval process and nuances and stuff. We really just wanted to get the meat and the bones with the design of what the individual subdivisions look like. You know, there's questions about plat approval and this, and this, and this. So, um, this will, this will affect, you know, ninety-nine percent of all subdivisions that come into Davie County. We have a few, like what I said, if they go through rezoning, if they rezoned R eight or R twelve, they've got sewer, they're not gonna go through this, because, because we're not, we're not dealing with those. Ninety-eight percent of the county is R, R twenty or R eight, so the majority of the subdivisions that we see in the county, we'll follow this. So, um, but yeah, there was a lot of discussions with that. People were really concerned. We do have a lot of people who are seeing, who work in, in the development, a part of the planning board throughout the state, and are seeing implementation of these in, in multiple municipalities and changes. I think this is a, this is a hot topic of discussion in Davie County as well as the state as a whole, um, with this. And I think the majority of these changes that, that we're looking to implement are already in place, and our developers are used to doing it everywhere. Um, so, uh, you know, having concerns with sidewalks, talking to developers is, when they sell the lot, they're just, when they pave the driveway, they'll put the sidewalk in. So, a, as passing on the cost, the individual lot size, a lot of municipalities are going to one acre minimum. That was discussed in the planning board, and it was like, one acre of forty thousand, and it kind of come to, to forty thousand. It kind of went kind of back and forth. There was a lot of discussion about that. So I, I think with some of these changes is, I don't think these are extremely progressive or punitive for some of the developers. I think these are more commonplace with what we're seeing with more and more, uh, I, I guess, county development. Not municipalities, because we got sewer and that's this whole another animal, but for septic tank systems, I think these type developments are more in place with what we're seeing throughout the state.
See, I mean, I think what we gotta keep in mind here is that we have very few local builders that do any developments right now. So, you know, I don't have any problem with saying, one of the things we're trying to do is improve quality, improve, um, you know, and not allow for ways to circumvent the, the rules by these track builders, because I don't think people, I think that was one of the number-one things that came out when we talked with the public about this. Uh, the, you know, the thirty to forty thousand square foot, I could see somebody arguing that, but one logical thing that I think I've got involved with on this is that some of y'all could testify too, is having trouble getting land to perk around here anyway, and the extra ten thousand feet can be a practical help there, when you do it over time to get a septic field to work. So, we were finding that a lot of lots aren't working, and they're having to be larger anyway. So, it's, you know, that makes some sense there.
I would, a comment and then a concern. Um, you know, one of the things, and I appreciate all this, and this needs to happen in some form, but there is Captain Obvious here, but there's cost with all this stuff we're talking about. If there is a floor.
Correct.
What a developer's gonna be able to put into land.
Correct.
So, you know, we talk about affordable housing.
Right.
This is not gonna help that. I understand the trade-off, but we need to keep that in mind as we work through this.
Mm-hmm.
And an observation is, um, on this floodplain, not allowing that as common area, I would, I'm thinking about Truist Sports Park. I understand floodplain, you can't do certain things, but it is very useful.
Right, correct.
I think, from what I, if I understand what I'm seeing here, that is, I think that's somewhat punitive, by not allowing the floodplain to be open area. I know it's limited, but I would ask, we might think about that a little bit.
Sure. So, so as it's currently states, thirty percent of that, would we want to increase that? So, like what we talked about, if you've got, let's say, ten acres is required, and just, and ten acres is in the floodplain, and is non-development. As it states now, only thirty percent of that, so three acres would be counted, and just using rudimentary math there, but, um, so, we could definitely increase that. Um, we one hundred percent can increase that. I, I know with some of the developments that we've had come aboard here, um, that we went through rezoning Hendricks upon Farmington Road, the majority of that property was in a floodplain, and they, they're common areas that could be utilized for recreation. This is just kind of thing, but it, but we can one hundred percent address that, increase that percentage to seventy percent, seventy-five percent. Um, or we could utilize and say, because it's just not developed. I mean, you could still put basketball field, well, basketball fields. There's a big push for pickleball. That's what I steer everybody to, put a pickleball court. So, uh, but, but yeah, that, that number could be definitely increased. It could be definitely increased.
Yeah, well, it's just, again, something to think about.
Sure.
Work through this.
But in those cases, they could come to us.
Correct.
We could allow them that. But I don't know if we wanted to like, put it, give, increase that for them not to have to come to us.
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the points that's already been made, but we don't want to encourage the workaround to be the norm.
Correct.
We won't, whatever we come up with, we need to try to stick to that best we can. If not, you're gonna be really busy.
Yeah, and you are too. And, and that's another thing. I don't want this to turn into every single thing coming to you guys. I do not want to do this. So we gotta have this fine, you know, where we say, okay, if this is what we expect of you as a developer, these are the things, and every developer that I deal with, when we sit down with them, what do we, can we expect? And they're willing to do that. There are some things that they can't do, that they change and all that. I mean, so, they're used to that, but I, I don't want this to come to like, like what, what was stated here earlier. I don't want every single, I don't want you guys to be, put you up in a situation where for whatever reason, we're picking and choosing winners. I, I don't think that's fair to the board as a whole, I don't think it's fair to the developer, and I think it just creates a lot of issues. So that is something that I definitely think that we need to address to a point, so that way, when it comes to you, it's just a rubber stamp. Okay, we're good to go. And it's just a consent agenda item for that, for, for that. Just to say, look, you know this is coming, we look at this. That is something that, that Brian, the planning board, and Ed and myself would probably need to discuss to kind of tighten up a little bit. Like I said, this is at its infancy. I want, you know, the planning board to definitely have impact, and I want you guys to have, uh, impact too in developing in, in, in here as well that goes on to the county, because you get phone calls, no matter where it's at. You get phone calls and phone calls and phone calls. So, that is something that I think we definitely need to address and tighten up a whole lot with this.
Johnny, we do get a lot of phone calls, and I've asked this before, so I'm gonna ask this again. Please keep us updated on what's going on.
Correct.
Because I would rather be able to answer the question without saying, let me call Johnny, or let me call Brian and get back to you, because I don't have a clue what's going on.
And, and with, with a lot of those changes, with the way the state has changed the approval process and taken a lot of private licensed soil scientists, and taken the health department, given a lot of developers the ability to go private and not go through the local health department, some of these things, we don't even know about. You know, there, there's a few developments around here that are dealing with that, they're dealing with, with private licensed soil scientists, and, and they'll call us at the last minute to say, hey, what do you think of this? We don't know about it. In the past, it would go through the local health department, that was the only permitted entity for the, uh, septic tank systems. Now, the majority of these huge developers are going private soil scientists, so it's at hour eleven when we even find out it's even coming.
Johnny, wouldn't it behoove us to have something in there? I know, uh, I have land that's considered floodplain, but I use it for hayfields and, and everything else, so, you know, it could be used for pretty much anything you want it to.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Except when it's flooded.
Yeah, and, and building any kind of structures on it.
Wouldn't it behoove us to differentiate sort of between floodplain and wetlands?
Right.
Because wetlands are virtually unusable.
See, and that was the question I had in context of Terry's question is, you know, for instance, Truist.
Yeah.
They use those bottom fields.
Right.
Uh, of course, there are times when they're flooded, but, uh, so really, even in the context of the development, you brought up the Hendricks property.
Right.
The, the, those floodplains are usable for recreational purposes.
Correct, correct.
Unless there's an exceptional.
Correct.
Issue going on. So, uh, you know, I have no problem with flexing with, with that, that number.
That's simple to me. Yeah, absolute, absolute. That's a, yeah.
I tend to agree that, don't want to be overly punitive. I think the only thing I can think of, and this may be a remote thing, is we need to be careful, would be, you say, you, let's say theoretically, you bought a four hundred acre track and it went down to the river, and a third of it was the river area that was the flood area, and the other two-thirds were buildable, not to circumvent things by saying, that's all the, you got green space galore there, and then we're gonna build this stuff.
Correct.
On top of each other.
Correct.
And that would be, that would be, I think, you know, we don't want to be punitive, because it'd be a great use. You could have all kinds of recreation. Walking trail's wonderful, but, you know, just keep that in mind. But I would say this about the affordable housing thing. We've, we've been to so many meetings and discussions on that, and I, you know, and I don't know that, I don't know that we can ever really provide that in the context of the county, unless we decide we're gonna go back and look at people being able to put single wides, and you may chuckle and say, that's not the route to go, but that may be a route that has to be looked at. This, you can't get builders, you, unless somebody gives somebody two hundred acres as a grant, says, I want to have nice, cheap housing for teachers, law enforcement, or whatever, nobody's gonna do it. Let's just, you know, we know that's not gonna happen. It sounds great, but affordable housing is either gonna have to be done like, with a single wide or a double wide or whatever, or it's gonna have to be done probably where you can get more density, and that sort of falls out of our category too with sewer.
Other questions or comments? Hey, it's great work.
I've got one more thing.
Oh, please, please.
If you guys want to, this is totally, we're, we're, we're taking a hard left on this. And if, if we can, this could be another time, but I've included this, because we had some, some issues that come up, and just want to, I get an opportunity to come before this board, we'll say this. So, solar, solar farms, we've got a couple more that coming up in this county, and, and I've received a couple other calls with this. Um, when we went in and redid the ordinance, you know, we had a moratorium, the moratorium done, what I did is looked at some of the requirements. If you look at the requirements in, in the zoning ordinance about restrictions, or not restrictions, but setbacks and other requirements associated with, with a solar farm, there's not a lot in there. Okay? So, what I did is just to put it before this board, is to add to the existing ordinance to address some of the concerns of the community as a whole with design. Um, these are not in it, so what I'm looking at is your thoughts. All solar panels must be located a minimum of a hundred feet, measured in a straight line direction from any property line. As it currently states right now, there is no setback off of property lines with solar panel, other than the twenty-foot buffer requirement for the fencing. So in essence, you could probably put them twenty-two foot away from a property line. So this is just something a little simple fix to add this. Also with that, all solar energy, the, all solar generating facilities shall be located on a continuous property of no less than a hundred acres. So if you do not have a parcel of a hundred acres or more, you cannot do a solar farm in Davie County. So this is the majority of them, this is the thirty acres, the forty acres, the fifty acres, or I've got thirty acres here and fifty acres across the road, and I'm doing this. No, this is a contiguous a hundred acres for the solar farm. And also associated with that, looking at the location of the solar panels, shall be located a minimum distance of a hundred foot, measured in a straight line, in any direction from the structure of the proposed solar farm to...
Five hundred.
Five hundred, sorry.
It's a hundred.
There you go, five hundred, thank you. Make sure you're awake. Um, you gotta be five hundred foot from a place of worship, a daycare, public or private school, public park, library, community pool, area of large number of minors travel or congregate, not limited to, public swimming pools, fire stations, police stations, public safety facility, nursing home, assisted living facility, medical facility, a funeral home, or any dwelling unit. So with you a developer, if you want to put that, you gotta pull a straight line from pretty much in essence, any home five hundred foot. We do not address any of the sites currently in our zoning ordinance in dealing with these, um, any of the locations, pretty much, if you have the property, the majority of our has to do with decontamination and all the certifications and all this stuff. There's very, very minimum about the site plan and design of where they're located on this. So in essence, what, what this is, is when we come in, if a proposed developer wants to do a solar farm, there's a negotiation with conditions, and this is implied and not implied, and I'm gonna be here and do this and do this, we've kind of taken that all out. When you come, these are the requirements that you have to set fit. If you can't meet those requirements, you know, it's not conditions associated with, these are put in on the front end, so that way, we can address concerns. You still would have to go through the meetings with the community, you would still have to go through the neighbor meetings and everything to have it rezoned, but in this, we've got more, um, requirements association where the location of the, of, of the solar panels themselves would be on the property.
So real quick, I know this is kind of, as Johnny said, it's kind of, we threw you for a curveball, switching it up a little bit, but, you know, recently, we've had some conversations here in the last month or two, and we just felt that, um, we, if, if there was a need to present something for you all to review, to hopefully address some of those concerns that were addressed by those citizens here in the county, that we'd go ahead and bring that for you to consider, um, in the future.
I know at one time, we were allowed to put this on farmland. Um, is there going to be a requirement that this is rezoned to something more, uh, commercial or industrial?
Correct. Yeah, it, it's currently in there. So, so if you have that, if you want to do one of these, it's, uh, the rezoning is an SP, so in essence, that's the requirement for that. It's a, it's a specific state, requires the developer, we still have to go through the planning board, but also with them, they have to meet certain criteria, having community meetings with the public on top of this. So there is a rezoning with that. So that farmland, you can still do it on farmland, but it has to be rezoned. It has to be rezoned.
They haven't changed any of that, you're just adding to.
I'm adding this, yes. So in essence, what it is now, is, is if you look at the regulations, there's this much in it, and I'm being kind of facetious, but there's that much where these things can go. So, we have a lot of, from what we've seen with these, the initial, you know, ABC Solar Farm, or us, company, they might sell that property.
Three times.
They might sell it to this developer and this developer, and they redesign and do this and do that. And unless we've incorporated very stringent, specific conditions associated with that approval process, it can morph and change. That property is on that, they can go right up to the property line. Me as the developer saying, you know what, it's best suited, we're gonna do everything over here. I'm not even approaching that property line. And three years down the road, you know, someone else gets it, and they go, you know what, that's a good area, I'm gonna utilize that. I've got the whole property, I can go within twenty foot of the property line, because the buffering requirements are set for it. But with this, it says, look, we got setbacks that you gotta maintain regardless, whether they were in conditions or not, these are set for it at the very beginning with every person that comes through. So it takes a lot of that out of it too. Um, I, I think this, and looking at some municipalities in some counties who have solar farms, this is kind of standard throughout. This is something that, that we don't have a lot of, that we really need to address with the location of the panels associated with single-family dwelling units with this. And, that, so, and, and I apologize for throwing this at the last minute, but, uh, this is something that before, um, we, we looked at this, this is just to get kind of input from this board on that.
Are, are our vegetation buffers, as they are now, sufficient? I, I know we have one over off Baltimore Road that is, uh, they're coming ro, almost up to the property line of the neighbors.
Correct. Are they sufficient? I, I think that's, that's not for me to...
Is that something we need to address, would be?
Well, with that, if we do this, we're a hundred foot off that property line, okay? And then if there's a house, that's, we're five hundred foot. So we're gonna have enough built-in setbacks with natural property. We can address buff, buffers as well, but this will... We can address buff, buffers as well, but this will address setbacks for, for them right up to it, because as it currently states, we can go right up to the property line within twenty foot, cause it just requires a twenty foot buffer. I can go right up to the property line with this, as it states now, I'm a hundred foot, or if there's a house that's fifty foot off the property line, I'm four hundred and fifty foot. Cause the, the, the engineer or the surveyor would have to submit a site plan showing that all these setbacks are maintained.
But this setback doesn't mean
Go ahead.
What you're talking about. I mean, they can say, if we don't, if we don't designate that veg, I think we've learned, they're gonna do everything they can get by with. So if we were to have that buffer, we better make sure we
Absolutely, and a lot of them will clear off around, around their area so they get more sunlight earlier.
Right.
And you can see five hundred feet.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And we could
House to those panels over there, if you don't have some kind of vegetation in between them.
Right, right. And, and, and I'm, I'm seeing with, with some, they're, they're willing to cut the natural buffer, they're cutting trees down to plant trees.
Yeah.
So
And I think that's something we probably ought to a, address in this as well.
Correct, and then also with the minimum lot size of being a hundred acres. Okay, with that a hundred acres, that, that is, we, we don't, you know, I can sit to a developer and go, hey, you gotta do a hundred acres, or that's that. You know, if you don't have a hundred contiguous acres, you're not doing a solar farm, period is, so that really drastically limits it, it's too, but yeah, absolutely, uh, Commissioner, they, they, we, we really need to look at doing some of the buffering, a, as well as increasing some of the buffering.
Cause some, our property around here is not always flat.
Right, right, correct, correct, oh yeah.
A hill, and you can see it even above the tree line sometimes.
Others?
You can see that, um, solar farm off Baltimore Road there, that, I mean, you look down the street and it's all visible, so. Uh, I think the past few weeks, we've learned they're gonna get by with anything that they can get by with, so we better be pretty careful what we put in there.
When are you planning to bring this to us for adoption?
Soon as possible, I can add, and I, I'll address, um, I, I don't, I, I just wanted to get your thoughts with this. Like I said, I've got a planning board meeting, then we could propose it and advertise it for the next planning board meeting, which would be, uh, January, and it would come to this board February, that, that is the quickest. Now, if these are things that we wanna address, the buffering, but if you guys are okay with a, with a five hundred foot setbacks and then a hundred acres and all these things, then yeah, I could, as quick as February, it could come before this board for a final vote, for approval.
Sounds good. Uh, any other questions?
I got one more thing.
Okay.
Thank you guys, that's it, I was gonna, scared you a little bit.
Yeah, scare me.
Right, go.
You gonna pour some milk in your hat and something come out?
All right. Uh, pending action items.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, for your December second meeting, uh, we'll need to approve the minutes from November fourth. Uh, regular meeting and closed session, uh, we will need to approve the board's twenty twenty-five, uh, schedule. Uh, we are looking to, uh, we just created the Ag Center Committee, and we are looking to, uh, appoint two more individuals to that committee. Uh, our standard budget transfers and amendments, uh, we have the Fire Relief Fund, um, on the agenda. And then, uh, as part of our asset deletion, uh, process, we have some sheriff's vehicles. Um, also, what we'd like to add, um, is, uh, this week, we opened the bids for the, uh, third floor courthouse renovation project. Uh, we will be finalizing that and, uh, getting it to you by the end of this week, well, I guess that's tomorrow. We will get it to you as soon as we can, so you can take a look at that, but plan would be to, uh, put the resolution to, uh, proceed forward with that ability to negotiate that contract, um, so we can get that project underway. So that's what we're looking at for December.
Anything you all would like to add or delete?
Karen, thank you for all your work on that Fire Relief Fund board, I know that was way more work than we thought it was gonna be.
And now, on the Ag Center, that kind of completes our, our committee, right? So now we're ready to move forward, uh, you know, I would just encourage us to do that is in a timely fashion. All right, anything else? Okay, anything you guys wanna bring up? Discussion.
Just wanted to discuss while we're all here together, the thing about the, um, what we will or will not do moving forward on the HSA. So I think that one of the things we'd have been in the email chain was just kind of knowing what the difference was on a premium between a person with the HSA versus that, so we could know, you know, cause the goal is to pass that on to the employee in some form or fashion, not as a way to capture money for the county. And, uh, when you're moving, you know, it's one thing to move from a situation where employees pay for part of their insurance, then you give them an option, then they're gonna gra, gravitate towards an HSA, but the current structure we have, there's gotta be an incentive or a compelling reason to want to utilize it. You know, we know there's tax benefits from having an HSA, uh, we've done, I've done some research and talked to other people that it actually, contrary to what people think, that people that have chronic conditions, my wife being one of them, is benefits from having an HSA. Uh, and, cause everybody looks at the high deductible thing. I, I think that, and just to make sure that, you know, we have the same type of drug coverages and the same type of, uh, you know, if you're gonna be required to get a physical, I, it should be part of the, you know, it should be part that's not deemed by any kind of deductible. So that's just what I wanted to throw out there, cause it's hard to make a decision on what we wanna do with that till we kind of have an idea of what we're gonna give to the employee as an incentive.
When, when are you supposed to have the costing on that?
Normally, when it comes to the health insurance, that's more of a February, March type thing, to be able to give you some final numbers. Um, I, I know Commissioner Shuff, I sent him some examples and some preliminary numbers, but I won't have that in, until more or less into the budget season. Um, but I, quite, one of the questions that I had sent to him was the, the whole part of the incentive, because, you know, we have a pretty good uh, health insurance as we have it right now, and because we do not charge our employee-only coverage, you know, enticing people to switch to the health savings account was a question that I had, just in general, um, more or less, because people are accustomed to what we have. Um, where you see this, uh, be more of a selling point is those communities and those organizations that do charge their employees some fee for being part of the health insurance. Uh, where an HSA may be either free or reduced compared, so it does entice people to switch more. And then also, we would need to figure out what our county contribution, or if we're gonna make a county kind of contribution. Um, I was always under the impression that we would be looking at something for the individual and the family plan, um, to help, uh, just like we do with our 401K match, you know, to encourage our employees to also make a contribution into their HSA. But, um, a lot of this, we won't know until we get into it. And also, if we get into it in a couple of years, it's not beneficial the way we want, we can always get out of it, so we're not locking ourselves into it forever, um, moving forward. But we would like to, um, uh, it, when we do make a decision, go ahead and start educating. Uh, we, we struggle as it is educating the, the workforce on all of our health insurance and benefit options that we have, so we'd wanna add this one too, to make sure they fully understand that there are perks to it, but it's a high deductible plan, there's pros and cons of that, and we just want people, we don't want somebody to come into a year from now to get into a medical situation and think an HSA is like our old plan, and it's not.
I have a quick question, this may be a Robin or Terry question here, in terms of the contributions to the HSA, the individual contributions. Are they pre-tax?
Yeah.
They are pre-tax?
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the benefits.
Yeah, okay, all right, so.
Yeah, I think one of the things, that's a good, it's a good option, I mean, if you're a, if, if you're one of the persons that's in, that's fortunately making a reasonably good salary, and you have a spouse that's making a reasonably good salary, it's something you can save on, you can make contributions, uh, like, you know, now that we're dependant-free in my household, and my wife has a reasonably good salary, we make contributions almost every year with the advice of our CPA, so we can avoid that percentage since it's pre-tax, plus it builds that. That's something to look at, but I think the biggest thing is I don't want, I won't, but what I wanna see here is let's say the savings is eighteen hundred dollars off of that, I don't know that it's that high. And if we're gonna cede the person a thousand dollars, well, what we gonna do with that other eight hundred dollars? Uh, can we give that employee a bonus? Because that's kind of where the people are incentivized to go to it. You got John Q. Public Utility Worker that makes thirty-five thousand dollars a year. Uh, the rubber meets the road if he sees that he or she sees that she can get seven hundred more dollars in her pocket. So that's, that's where it becomes, we're in sort of a unique situation, actually, when I look around at other places to where we do pay everybody, so there's not a lot of incentive to switch unless you have an incentive to switch.
Do we know if we have a lot of people switch to that, if that's gonna mess up our insurance as we have it now? Is that gonna increase our rates because we have less people?
So it's not a, it's not so much a number of people, it's more of your healthy versus unhealthy.
So more unhealthy will stay on our insurance, so we have a chance of that mess.
More than likely, because it's what they knows, what they're comfortable with, and if they've already have had some type of health condition, they at least understand and, and, and have a basic knowledge of what to expect.
What I don't want to happen is for our rates to go up so much to the point that we have to say we can no longer pay our employees, and they have to start paying for their insurance.
Correct, I mean, the, I mean, I, I have been in other organizations where there is a charge for health insurance, and you start factoring in your annual increase, and then your health insurance increases, you just wiped it out. And, and I would tell you, that's a goal of ours to avoid as much as we can, depending on how things shape up as we go through the budget process. We don't want to pass any additional cost to the employee. Um, but that's just one of those things we won't know until we actually have enrollment, uh, into the, we, we can, we can run you the figures in February based on a percentage of what we anticipate signing up. But if everyone's switches, it, it will have an impact, and we just don't know what that looks like.
No, we're not sure of what impact, but when the gentleman came and presented to us, he made it sound like there wouldn't be, cause that was one of the questions we asked early on, we didn't want there to be some type of impact to our cost and because of the riskier people staying on one thing, so, you know, that all needs to be, is that so, is that not so, is there somewhere in the middle? You know, that, that's all gotta be decided before we would see.
I, I think the quantification of it, you got so many variables there, it's gonna be a guess. I mean, there's no way you're gonna be able to pinpoint it at a, a number, but anyway, it's something we should definitely look at, but it's, it'll be some complexities, it will be difficult to get everyone to understand, I believe.
Okay, anything else on that, Brett, anything?
Okay.
Anybody else, any other items to, wanna bring up or? All right. We will move on to Commissioner's comments, I don't know if that was in the discussion, but Richard, if you got anything else?
Just like to thank everybody for getting out and voting. Had some really good results, and, and, uh, thank you for coming today. And, uh, former Commissioner Michael Allen here, it's always good to see you in the audience. And, uh, come back next month, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks for being here, as always, and, um, I hope you eat a lot at Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving.
Just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, um, coming up, and appreciate you being here, appreciate the county employees, obviously, and, um, you know, going into this, keep all the people in western North Carolina in your thoughts and prayers. I've been fortunate to be out there helping some, and it's, I just keep seeing things that I didn't think I would see, so it's, you know, anybody else that's been out there, you know what I'm talking about, thanks.
Anita.
Just wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and, um, our county is about to be a whirlwind of activity. There are so many things going on in this county, I just encourage you to participate. Um, we have parades three weekends in a row, and most of all, um, I want to encourage everybody to shop local. We have wonderful businesses in this county, and we need to do our Christmas shopping in Davie County. Thank y'all, and happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. We are blessed, uh, so we wish you a happy Thanksgiving, everybody, are, are we live streaming? Everybody on the live stream, we wish them happy Thanksgiving, and, uh, uh, as always, we thank you for all you guys do. I think we're all staff here except for Michael, and he, he might be considered about half, so, uh, we, we thank y'all for being here. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Ms. Finney and Mr. Dwyer Duster, all in favor? All right, we stand adjourned, thank you for being here.